... meeting for March 5, 2019. I call this meeting to order and ask the clerk if you please call the roll.
See Cameron?
Here.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Dany?
Here.
Gabrunia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
Here.
President Wallace? Here. We're going to be reviewing budget for the first part of this meeting, then we'll be adjourning to our board meeting, and then we'll be reopening after the board meeting. So with that, we will go to our Finance and Golf Committee. Chairman Dany?
I'm getting caught up here. Oh, come on. That's Siri Witt getting help me with. Let me get my computer on. Okay, thanks. Yeah, Finance and Golf, thank you, Mr. President. The first item we have on our agenda is the, we're going to bypass the civic group funding request, right?
Correct.
We'll be ready to propose budget review.
Correct.
Todd? So kind.
Um...
Paula?
I'm just going to give you a quick little intro. As a result of continued initiatives relative to fiscal health, economic development, and expenditure reduction, I am pleased to present for your consideration the proposed annual budget. Overall, the village's portion of the total property tax bill is about 10 percent. Much of what we will be discussing tonight is funded from the general corporate levy. The general corporate levy is budgeted to be flat from the previous, from the prior year. This is the eighth consecutive year Bartlett has kept this levy reduced. We are starting tonight's review with Central Services. After the board meeting, we will continue to the committee meeting with civic funding discussion, and then go on to the Administration Department budget review, followed by professional services, police, and if time allows, golf. And with that, I will turn it over to Chris to walk you through his department.
Good evening, Mayor and trustees. Thank you for the opportunity to review the Central Services budget. As you're probably all aware, the Central Services budget, our fund was created to account for those items that aren't easily attributable to an individual department, such as building maintenance services, utilities, printing of the Bartletter and such. If you're all there on the right page, it's, I don't know if Central Services bookmarked or if it's in Finance.
Yeah, Central Services is bookmarked on your thing, so if you're having trouble, you should be able, all the departments are bookmarked, you should be able to just click on them. If you go to somewhere else, you'll know how to find it.
So we're going to start with the Personnel Request on page 12, which we have none this year. So we'll move on to the Capital Outlay Requests. Just a reminder that these capital outlay items are paid out of our Equipment Replacement Fund. That fund is kind of a pay-as-you-go fund, where when we purchase particular items or software, we try to estimate a life of that and then set aside money each year, so that by the end of the life of that item, we have the funds available for replacement. Doesn't mean we replace it at that particular time, it just means that we've at least put the money aside. The first item that we have is the replacement of desktop computers and monitors. This represents about one-third of our computers that are used by our staff. These are all going to be over four years old. We feel it's important to replace these on a regular basis, just to ensure that the computers aren't an obstacle for our staff, but rather an asset. The second item is an update for our SQL Server license for our ERP and GIS service. So let me explain what that is, in case some of you don't know what SQL. SQL Server is a database. ERP, in this case, is everything from general ledger to payroll to billing permits, those are all those applications. GIS, of course, is geographic information system. But in order to continue to receive, to upgrade our software, that's part of our maintenance, we do have to keep this particular part up to date. So that's to fund that. Item number three is Office 2019 software. This is the Microsoft Office Suite. We upgrade every six or seven years, so we usually skip a version or so, but we don't want to fall so far behind that it becomes difficult to change, exchange documents with other agencies, or get beyond the point where Microsoft's supplying security patches. So that will bring all the staff computers up to Office 2019. Just so you know, Office 365, I'm sure you hear about it. It's not that we didn't consider that, it's just that it would have cost us as much in two years as it would cost us this one time. So they, what most agencies are spending per year is probably five times what we're spending, just to have Office 365. The fourth item is a card access system replacement. This is the system that you use our key cards to access the building and different areas of the building. This system goes back to 2005. The software is no longer supported by the manufacturer. The readers are also unable to read the cards that are being used on more modern systems like the police department, so they're required to carry two cards now instead of one. So this would allow us to upgrade the system and upgrade the readers on the doors, so we would be, have a more secure facility and one that won't have to worry about losing access or the ability to make changes. Item number five is squad car camera DVR replacement and camera replacement. This is an ongoing cycle that we have, so every year you're seeing five, sometimes six of these being replaced. Rather than wholesale replacing them all at once, we wait till they're about five years old, and then we replace them. It's fairly critical for the police department to make sure that these cameras are working, especially this day and age, when video of what's going on is so important.
Let me ask you a question about that.
Sure.
Why are the squad car cameras in the Central Services and not the police budget?
It's just because the Equipment Replacement Fund. And again, it's one of those items that we just, we want to make sure we have money for at the end of the five years or so.
Makes sense. Thank you.
We do, as you see in every department's budget, there's a transfer to Central Services. We do a long, complicated calculation to figure out which each, how much each department has to pay into that fund. So they are paying for them. Number six is replacement copier for the Community Development Department. This was scheduled to be replaced last year. Jim put it off another year, you know, but it's getting very old in tooth. It's over six years old now. Item number seven is a replacement copier for the Building Department. It's only five years old, but it's been quite problematic. We won't be buying another Toshiba copier, and so I know that this being their only printer, they are really kind of desperate to get that replaced. Number eight was something we brought to last year, and again, and we're bringing it back for consideration, but possible replacement for this projector. We would hope that we'd be able to maybe get something a little brighter, a little clearer, but again, it's up to you, of course, what your feelings are about it.
Who is this projector?
2005, so it's quite long in tooth. There's always a chance it's going to break down, and there probably won't be parts available, but again. Item number nine is a website redesign. So the last time our website was redesigned was five years ago. Again, kind of bringing it to you as to whether or not you feel that maybe the website could use a little freshening up, a little change in design, so that, we've added that item in there. On to the next, Professional Development detail. There's not any real changes to this from last year's. Again, this covers the training for the IT and GIS staff. You know, IT and GIS, of course, being in information technology is constantly changing, and it's just a matter of just trying to keep up with all the changes. The classes unfortunately are quite expensive, even though we choose the cheapest option, which is remote attendance, but it's still not the cheapest. Next page is the Professional Association. Again, nothing's really changed there. And the line item detail, I'll just quickly go over those. So the first item, the regular salaries, we moved GIS out of Community Development into Central Services, so we've seen some, there's an increase in salary because part of the salaries for GIS were being allocated to Community Development previously. Now those allocations are all 100 percent Central Services. We felt it was just a good place to put them, just because of the fact, like IT, GIS serves every department. The, sorry, my glasses on. So the other change there is the service agreements. Again, with the completion of the new Police Department building, there were several new service agreements for building maintenance that had to be accounted for, so that's what those are there. We saw a significant decrease in building maintenance services. Last year, we had increased the budget for janitorial services, not sure of what, how much that was going to cost. Thankfully, it cost a lot less than we anticipated, so we've reduced the budget accordingly. And then Utilities, we increased quite a bit, only because we have recently changed our franchise agreement. In the past, we used to receive free thermes from Nightcore. Rather than receiving the free thermes, we've decided to take cash instead, which actually turned out much better, because we weren't using all the thermes, and we actually get a lot more revenue than we do pay out towards natural gas. I wasn't going to bore you with the rest of the details, but if there's any questions on any of the line item justifications, I'd be glad to try to answer any.
Professional Development, there's GIS training?
Yes.
Is that for a new technician, or is it continuing education?
It's continuing education, so we have, well, one and a half GIS staff, and so these are classes for them to continue to learn about the new processes. Every year, they're changing the software. Unfortunately, the classes, I mean, can range anywhere from $1,000 to $3,000 for a class, so I wish it got, you could get more for it, but you know, Ezri sets the pricing, and you're pretty much bound to it, so. Well, if there aren't any other questions, thank you very much for the opportunity.
If you want to, we can start civic funding. You please?
Civic.
That's the first item under the committee meeting.
And then return back to the rest of the presentations afterwards, you think?
Yeah, you know, the civic funding is a big part of Admin's budget, so then I would just roll right into the Admin budget after that, but it's such a big chunk for discussion that we separated out.
Hmm, I don't know, does that allow us enough time to be done with that discussion by 7 o'clock to start our board meeting? Okay.
Maybe enough time for Scott's presentation, but maybe not your full, we can come back to it.
Okay, I want you to present it now, and then we need to adjourn and get the board meeting completed, and then come back to it. We'll do that.
Good evening, Mayor and Board, thank you very much. First item on the committee agenda this evening is the civic group funding. As Paula said, it's part of the administration budget, and as you recall, the Village Board instituted a formal process for civic funding in June of 2015. Since that, since then, we've had a formalized process. And the memo before you this evening really highlights three different items. One was the dollars that were granted in 2018, 2019, as well as the dollars requested in '19 and '20, and the dollars proposed. You have one new requester, that's the Alignment Collaborative for Education. Given the Board's direction last year, what we did was apply that methodology to this budget, and last year, we had some discussions concerning uncertainty and things from the state. So what we did was apply last year's method to this year's, and we reduced the budget 5 percent across the board for all the civic groups. And one thing that I think is important to mention when considering this is that there are several dollars allocated to these special events and civic groups that are not reflected in this memo. And those dollars are police and public works time. In total, our event costs for just police for 2018 was $49,000, with the bulk of that going to the Fourth of July festivities, as well as some of the other groups that you see on here, like Heritage Days and Lions Day Dash. So some of those monies that are allocated towards those civic groups are not reflected in this memo. But certainly, the village does go above and beyond, besides the dollars that are just requested here. So if you-
Now, is that 49,000, including all of those outside events?
As far as the civic, they don't, they include the Fourth of July, Heritage Days, and the Lions Club Run.
What about public works?
There's also public works time as well. It really depends on whether or not the barricade setups are within the flow of their regular business day or not, but they do contribute quite a bit, too.
Do we have an ideas to a dollar figure? Ballpark?
I would say, you know, we kind of looked at that numbers, I think it ranges anywhere between 20 and 32,000.
I think with these events, I think that that's our primary responsibility, is safety in the outdoor arenas. Safety, and then we have to push in some fostering community events, so I think that's what we should be considering. We certainly, at our strategic planning meeting, talked a lot about fostering more community in different areas. I wouldn't be in favor of decreasing the amount that we gave last year. I don't know how the rest of the Board feels, but I think that we came up with a number last year that was adequate. I'd like to hear everybody's opinion.
So what you want to do is maintain what we gave last year, not reduce it by the 5 percent?
Yeah.
Okay.
This shows it reduced at 5, another 5 percent.
Proposed.
Yeah.
I just think that these events do foster community. I think they foster more economic results than just what we're giving here. I know there's a lot of traffic flow, there's a lot of people that see things they usually don't see. If they're coming to the Arts in Bartlett, for example, if they're coming to Heritage Days, you're seeing a lot of the downtown area some people had never seen before. I think it more, it's more of a marketing thing than it is a donation, would be my opinion.
Well, I agree, last year, I didn't even want to reduce it 5 percent, because I felt pretty much, I felt very strongly that, you know, this is what brought people into our village, this is what promoted our village, and, you know, and it generated additional revenue for some of the businesses that we have here in town. We have some, some very exciting things that are happening in our village right now, and to bring people in to see the new development and the new businesses that are opening, I think that, you know, at a minimum, you know, we should just maintain what we gave them last year, so I concur, I agree with that. I wouldn't want to see it reduced again. And when I look at the Fourth of July Committee, Heritage Days, you know, I've attended all these, Arts in Bartlett, I remember that, Bartlet Chamber of Commerce, the Lions Club, we're, you know, a number of us are involved in that, and the Veterans Memorial, obviously. I need to ask, what is this alignment? I don't know what this is.
The Alignment for Education is the cooperative effort that the School District has with the business community. It is the program under which we had the pilot internship program. We are planning to expand our participation with that, increasing the number of interns that we will take here at Village Hall over the summer from five interns to seven. We plan to, you know, up our role in that group. That was a blanket request for funding that went to everyone that participates in that collaborative, and the School District Alignment is a separate entity, and we felt that we did not fund it because we are such a big part of their internship portion of the program, and we think we, that is how we support that organization.
So our responsibility, in your opinion, has been fulfilled?
I believe so.
Okay.
Beyond, beyond just dollars. I mean, we dedicate a lot of time and effort into working with the students on their interviewing skills, their resume writing, exposing them to different careers and skills that we have here. We work closely with them for the time that we have them. We do exit interviews with them, they get a real, a real-life experience that I think is unique, and we're excited to do it, we're happy to do it, and we're looking forward to expanding it this summer. Another consideration that I would like to mention, one of the things that we always think about in our community is certainly we are a family-focused community. So many of our households are identified as family households, it's like 78 percent, but we also are a community that has a growing number of multi-generational households, and we certainly want to be open to that segment of our population. There's a study from ARP that says one in five older adults highlights social isolation as one of their major problems, and one of the ways that I think we address that issue from the village is we have robust communication, and we also have these engaging community events. And they certainly build community, they bring people out of their homes into a sense of a lively community that they're part of, and I think as we find more and more of these multi-generational families and households, these kinds of civic events certainly appeal to a broad range and kind of foster that, that kind of healthy lifestyle that we want to encourage.
Paula, I'm a little concerned about this direction of bringing in these, some of these, like this Alignment Collaborative for Education, seems to fall outside of the, of the civic group funding parameters, so to speak. I'm a little concerned, we're starting to open doors that we shouldn't open.
Well, we don't restrict applications, so because they are, I believe, a nonprofit organization-
They are.
-that, and that separate entity, it's not the School District, it's a different entity that works closely in collaboration with the high school. They had, they sent out this funding request, we said it should be part of this discussion and not a separate response.
And I would just add, with the ACE program, they're pretty, and I was involved with that organization at its inception, on the executive board, they're very aggressively looking for ways to help the students at Bartlett get into different fields that, for kids that might not go to college. I think it's a, it's a really strong program for that.
When we, we met earlier with Get Fresh, and Mayor, you probably know this because you were there at the beginning with this, Get Fresh is a major supporter of the Alliance, and they do, they work very closely with the high school on doing just that, Mayor.
Which I think is a great idea, I just don't think it fits into the parameters of what we're trying to give money to, personally. I just, I mean, everything else revolves around bringing people to our community, and this is about enriching kids, I get it, I just don't know that it falls into the parameters of what this whole funding really should be.
That's exactly why we don't recommend any funding to them in this.
Right, you're not proposing to give them any money.
I'm just very familiar with the group. I know that surrounding communities are giving this dollar per student, Hannover Park does, I believe, parts of Carol Stream do as well. They give a certain, they ask for a dollar per student that's involved in the system. Does anyone have an opinion on the Bartlet Veterans Memorial Foundation? If there's something that-
I thought that was almost completed.
They said it's seven phases, so they're in phase three.
Right. I said on, in the very beginning with, on the committee, when we formed that, and, you know, we've brought it through the, I was through the phase one or two, and the three, I, seven phases seems like a lot, but to get through, I mean, it certainly has a place. The veterans, you know, we have memorial services and everything else. Do we know exactly what the 12,000 that they're requesting for?
Do we know what they're anticipating doing next? I didn't see that in the, let me see here.
Oh, go ahead. Go ahead, Sam.
Yeah, they want to add a pillar for each branch of the military at the, at the site.
This is another one that we don't recommend funding. We do, I think, a lot of in-kind support at the memorial, public works-
We do some, we do some work with their irrigation. Those beautiful new Ginkgo trees that you see at the memorial were assisted by the village. Certainly, we have a long history with the land, and given that, given that was the direction last year, that's what we applied to this year.
I would, I would just disagree with not funding anything that they're requesting with the memorial. When we're funding part of this park for the Parks Foundation, I don't see that we can pass up the Veterans Memorial Foundation.
So then are you talking about, are you proposing that we would increase the overall budget for the civic group funding program? Or are we just reallocating last year's number? Because I'm, I'm not supportive of increasing the overall size of the program, but if there's a reallocation, certainly worth discussing.
Yeah.
Because otherwise, it gets out of control.
Yeah, and I don't know the answer to that, I just know that at some point, when I look through these numbers, I know, we all know the impact of a lot of these events, and they're immense, and I don't know. I think we'll, we're going to have to adjourn and pick this discussion up anyway afterwards. So we'll put that on hold. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn to the board meeting. Moved by Trustee Dany, seconded by Trustee Carbonaro. With a clerk, please call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
Yes.
Carbonaro?
Yes.
Dany?
Yes.
Gabrunia?
Yes.
Hopkins?
Yes.
We are adjourned. 2019, I call this meeting to order, and again, please ask the clerk to call the roll.
Trustee Cameron?
President.
Carbonaro?
Here.
Dany?
Yes.
Gabrunia?
Here.
Hopkins?
Here.
Ranky?
President.
President Wallace?
Here. I believe we will pick up where we left off on civic funding group discussion, which then, what's the game plan for what we're, what else we're going to try to tackle?
Tonight, we're going to try and tackle the administration budget, Professional Services, the Police Department, and hopefully, we can get through golf. What I heard in our discussion about civic funding, three things: keeping the funding at the level it was last year, reducing the level by 5 percent as in the memo, and reallocating some of the dollars to provide a donation for the veterans. That was- That was three things that you talked about just a few minutes ago, and we're seeking your direction.
Does anybody else have any other opinions on civic funding?
I definitely don't want the dollar amount to go up.
Okay, wait.
I think we need to keep it the same. Was there a reason why you chose not to propose dollar amount for the Bartlett Veterans Memorial?
That was, that was the direction that was given last year. We, last year...
We adjusted this dollar amount last year?
No, no. Last year, when we met at, for the budget meeting to discuss civic group funding, we kind of went back and forth and it was decided that no new applicants would be taken in and the current applicants would be reduced by 5%.
I'm in keeping it the way it was last year. I'm, I'm in keep, I'm for keeping it the way we, the, in the amount we had last year. I don't want to reduce it.
I wish there was a way to monetize the advantages of these each individual events for the, for the, for the village, but there isn't. It's really subjective.
Yes.
However, I do feel strongly that it's part of the fabric that creates Bartlett. So, you know, I'm, I'm shifting a little bit, as everybody's noticed. I'm shifting in my opinion on this particular topic, but I believe the majority of the board. Let me just be flat out, is everybody okay with leaving the amount the same as it was last year without reducing it by 5%?
Yeah.
Let's, and go with staff recommendations.
Yeah.
Well, we'd like to have some conversation possibly including the veterans.
We didn't include them last year. And that, my understanding is we didn't include them last year because they were a new entry into the process? Is that right, Scott?
That's correct.
So...
Well, if we leave the dollar amount the same as it was last year without reducing the 5%, let's, let's donate the difference to the Veterans Memorial.
I could agree with that.
It's a thousand bucks, I think, right? Last year, we granted 23,475 or 22,302, a little over. Is everybody okay with that?
So you're saying we give the veterans a thousand dollars?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Whatever the difference is. All right. Good. I'll let you go ahead and chair the rest of this. Mr. Trustee Danny?
I just want to make sure that... Yeah, okay.
We'll go ahead and go on to the next exciting budget review topic.
Yes. Oh, sorry. Go ahead.
We should have had really high-octane, like, coffee at this, uh, big deal.
Espresso.
Yeah. Everybody's a little dead. Could be the cold weather, though, too.
That would help.
You guys look like you've been crunching numbers for weeks.
Yeah.
So we're going to start now with administration. I will tell you that from most recently, while department productivity, workflow, service demands, community safety, and personnel costs are evaluated throughout the year, a particular focus in the recent weeks have been placed on combining the building department and the community development department under one department. This has been an ongoing effort and will continue into the next month. And we're evaluating everything. We're evaluating all frontline customer service interactions, the development process, all our inspection services. Emphasis will really be on rethinking our service delivery methods for better efficiency, for the ease of use and customer service, as well as cross-training opportunities. The management team has really been digging deep into this endeavor. They've gone back and talked to their, their individual department staffs, getting their feedback on what works and what doesn't, and really looking at the entire workflow process, not just how we interact with each other, but how we interact with the residents and the business community, right down to the physical space of how we do that and how people move through the building. So it's a, a big endeavor. It's something that administration's going to be dedicating a lot of time to, and you'll be seeing that as it touches most of the departments. And so as we go through, you'll be seeing those changes. And I just wanted to introduce that to all of you. It's something the mayor and I have been talking about for quite a bit. And it's taking, it is a significant amount of staff time, so I wanted to lead off with that. And then I will also turn things over to Scott for the overview of the department.
I would just highlight that with the effort that's been put into this is, is massive. And the goal that we've been talking about is to become not only maintaining the level of professionalism that we have in this village right now because of you folks, but also becoming one of the most efficient villages in the metro. That's the goal. Highly effective efficiency. So, and they are going to demonstrate some of that this evening with what they've been pouring through for weeks.
Go ahead, Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Board. I'm going to take you through the administration department budget. If I skip over anything, and you feel free to stop me. It's not disrespectful to the line item, but just to respect of your time. This, this department budget is framed off a brand-new strategic plan, one that you elicited the community to be involved in as well. And it comes on the heels of the two largest infrastructure projects in the history of the village. Other highlights include a continued education of the water switch. As a matter of fact, if you looked at our website or Facebook yesterday, we highlighted our new, our new storage tank. So we're continuing to make sure that that cascading effect continues in preparation for the water switch. We'll be doing more media, more Bartlett information, more videos. Paula directed staff last week to create a video discussing the switch and what will occur and what residents can expect from that. So that will continue to be a priority. Speaking of videos, we're going to be doing more production of videos, resident FAQs. And there's a lot of services that we provide that residents may not be familiar with. So we're going to be pushing, pushing those types of videos out. Next highlight is the Business 100 Initiative. We have, last several years, averaged about 40 or 50 business visits per year. We're going to double that. We're going to visit 100 businesses. And the reason for that is because our vacancy rate has gone down. And retainment of businesses is going to be every bit as much crucial as recruitment, which is typically done in the office or on the phone. So we're going to be doubling our efforts in visiting 100 businesses. And one thing that, that's not in this budget when it was formulated, that I think is important to highlight, is that staff has been working, and we're this close, we're at the finish line, to having a communication email from every single business that's in Bartlett. So we'll be able to communicate with the entire business community by a click of a button. So that's something that, that wasn't in here when this was transcribed, but something that's a big highlight going into next year. Our new health care and wellness initiatives continue to be on the, on the forefront of human resources. As you recall, two major changes occurred that the board worked together with Paula and Janelle on. One is the timeline of, of the new, new health care initiatives. It gives the board time to digest the changes, as well as give enough time to implement those prior to open enrollment. So that's one big change. And the second big change was the savings that occurred for over $400,000 in savings was in health care plan. So that's definitely a highlight that is important to, to bring up. Moving on to the, the next page, this budget before you adds one full-time employee and it takes away an intern. And I think there are several reasons for that. One is your productivity at the dais. The last two years, 300, exactly 300 ordinances have been passed. You'd have to go back about almost 15 years to find that productivity. So along with that workload comes, comes more support. Two, I would say, our economic development efforts. Slowly, slowly but surely, in my eyes, we're not just the administration department anymore. We're the economic development department. We're a team. You know, so ever since Paula brought Tony over here, we have a lot more concerted effort on that. So it's, it's, it's not just one economic development coordinator, it's a team. So that's part of the reason for that change. Also, a third component of this change, I would say, would be cross-training and keeping our employee count down through the rest of the departments. As you see in the budget, out of 30 communities, we're ranked eighth in employees per thousand. And part of that is having employees who are cross-trained that we can plug and chug to do some of the basic fundamentals of the other departments. So that's, that's something we feel very strongly about, and, and that's why I proposed to you is, is that personnel move. The next section are a lot of the strategic plan, plan that you've seen a few times, so I won't cover those. I think you've seen those a few times, but certainly if you want me to elaborate or if you have any questions, I'd be, I'd be willing to highlight some of those. But I think you're very familiar with a lot of those goals. Moving on to some of our activity measures, which is on page 103, you'll see a large, significant bump in social media followers. Part of that, part of, part of that bump is because, A, we're doing more, but B, also encompassed in that is Discover Downtown, which previously was a part of a community developments purview. Website visits are going up a little bit. And as I talked about business visits, we're going to be doubling that effort. So we're looking at, at 100 business visits there. Moving on, personnel request. It says none because the, the position, it's, it's feeling an old position. It's not a, a new position. Moving on to professional development detail, this all really remains pretty much identical to last year, except for one addition. It's for an economic development certification course for your assistant administrator to go to Oklahoma. There are only 33 certified economic development coordinators in the state of Illinois. Tony's actually one of them. But that's certainly a line item that, that we'd be more than happy to, to cut. But something that I, I think, given the fact of our strategic plan and how much focus is based on economic development, I think it could be worth investing in. And please feel free to stop me if you have any questions. Professional association detail, this remains, this remains the same, really no changes. And moving on to page number 111, the history museum remains the same, same amount of funding. Civic group funding and community relations, I think we just highlighted, highlighted those. And then the next item for discussion is the BEDA program. And we are requesting an increase to $250,000. And while that is, is a big bump, I have several reasons why staff is recommending that. One is that if you look at the strategic plan and you look at all the items, 43% of those items are economic development. So we feel as though the resources can adequately mirror that percentage. I think we're creating a lot of momentum. We're creating a lot of buzz. This program has done something that we're really happy about. People are calling us, which is great. There are some businesses that we are working with that are already in the pipeline. One that you've already heard about is Mr. Rafidia. Should he continue down, down the path of purchasing that plaza, he would be coming in for another grant. Given the fact that that's two parcels, he would be eligible. We are also working with a few businesses that are very familiar to the community, that have, that are very influential businesses that people are very familiar with. You know, a lot of the focus has been on the downtown, but some of the businesses that we're currently talking to about this program are along Route 59, and they're exciting prospects. So we're looking to, to enhance the program and, and further that. And if you have any questions, I, I'd be happy to answer them.
Scott, you mean, you mean expansions of existing businesses?
That's correct. Thank you, Paula.
BEDA funding is coming from the gaming revenue.
That's correct.
This is all, that number was also reviewed with the Economic Development Commission, and they are supportive of that increase.
Yep. That's correct.
Do you foresee changing the criteria at all in, 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 in increasing the budget? Or is it the similar criteria, but being able to honor more requests?
Last year, you know, and Scott, please correct me if I'm wrong, last year being the initial piloting of this program, midway through, the board asked for additional prospectus information, a business plan from the applicants. That was added to the program as additional criteria from what we originally established. The EDC was asked to give additional input on the program and the criteria. I believe that was the only change that they reviewed and approved. There weren't any additions that they wanted. They did have a very robust discussion about the program. And also, one of the, one of the caveats in this increase is that, in addition to the application process and the business development plan that we're requesting, there are several layers of review. And the fact that it goes to the EDC, well, it goes to the staff and we make a recommendation on the dollar amount, but also to the EDC, it goes to you for discussion and then for approval, and these are rebates, not blank checks upfront. And, and I think what we have found over the, this experimental year is that the investment that these businesses are making in the community are, are long-lasting. They are, they're brick and mortar. They are equipment that is significant. They are code kind of requirements that enhance the real estate, I guess, I would say, in our community. And we certainly hope that those businesses thrive and stay there. But in the event that they do not, then investment still remains within the community. And we think that that's a real important part of this, mitigating the risk of this kind of a program. Scott, if there's anything?
I would just comment that what I've really appreciated about the program is that it has been geared more towards smaller businesses in, in smaller increments. And I would just voice my opinion that raising that, that budget item more, in my mind, just gives us the opportunity to bestow that upon more small businesses, not a larger amount to the same amount of businesses. That is just my opinion, as they come through. And of course, everybody is entitled to theirs, but I just wanted to make that, that comment. I would be for the increasing of that amount, but for small businesses in that similar increments that we've done.
Speaking of which, that fund is depleted from last year? Or is it...
Uh, there's $25,000 left. So while we're still talking to people, I mean, given the timeline of the fiscal year, someone would have to get an application in prior to the April EDC, and then you'd have to see it shortly thereafter. So given the timeline, there may be $25,000 unspent in that budget item, budget line item.
Would that then carry over to the following year?
No.
Okay, goes back into the fund?
That's correct.
Good.
And then we'll move on to the professional services.
One of the things that kind of scared me was when I looked at the salaries going back from 2015 to you requested for 19 and 20. It shows a significant increase. In fact, we've cracked the $1 million mark. That scares me, and I just want to express that. I understand that you've shuffled personnel around, and that that's what's driving that, but I think to a lot of people, that's very scary because you're cracking $1 million there. But the health insurance only increased 1%, which is a wonderful job compared to what we used to do year over year. That's fantastic.
And on that point, Scott alluded to it as well, but as you remember from last year, our timeline for, we moved right from budget into reviewing the health insurance plan, and we will be doing that again this year so that we have time to evaluate the many options, you know, that we came up with last year, and new ones, working with our broker to continue that effort and give you enough time to evaluate any changes in time for open enrollment.
Fantastic. And can you elaborate on the shift in employees?
Yes. The HR department fell within that budget, as well as our economic development coordinator.
So there's three additional bodies in the admin budget?
From '15 to '19, that's correct.
Yeah. Not additional, just moved, shifted.
Okay.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks.
Sam, you did a great job. The professional services budget, there is a modification to that budget in light of our discussion at the last board meeting. Dr. Kamer asked that we include funding for feasibility study for grade separation at Sterns and West Bartlett. We've added $100,000 into the engineering services line item for that request. And I will let Todd walk us through this budget.
All right, thank you, Paula. Yeah, professional services is also in the general fund. This is where, I'll just go down the line item quickly. Actuarial, that's for our police pension actuarial service. We split half of that fee with the police pension fund. Our legal services, the list of our legal services is on the next page as far as, that's our, our housing court is down due to the local adjudication. A lot of those things are handled through the local adjudication now. We also have our lobbyist in there, our labor attorney, administrative hearing attorney. So that's all in professional services. Engineering services, that used to be where Christopher Burke is. We didn't have any expenses in Christopher Burke this year. They're all, we charged those to projects. But now, we had Deegan Associates related to Lucky Jack's demolition remediation.
Todd, can I ask you to back up? I don't want to beat up Brian too bad, but I got to know, is village attorney based on this year's estimate plus 5%?
We put that in there as an estimate. We'll be reviewing all of the professional services contracts. I don't believe that Brian has had an increase in a number of years. We do, we do put that in the budget increases for all of them, but we haven't, we haven't seen an increase in a number of years.
And it's not just Brian?
No, that's for, I think that goes to all of our, all of our professional services. Good to know.
And is this negotiable there, Brian?
What's the village attorney charging an hour?
It varies, but.
Yeah, I was going to say vary.
If we can charge it to a developer, it's more per hour. And I don't even remember what the base low rate is, but there's criteria. But the higher ones are, we can charge those out. The others, depends if I'm in court or if I'm in the office. So, you know, it's a guesstimate because I just charge by the hour, you know, in terms of what my time is and keep descriptions, and then staff sends out bills to developers to get reimbursed and whatnot, so.
I think we're solving for X. Exactly. I love, I love that answer. But I'm assuming that it's market rate is where I'm going with my line of questioning.
Probably below.
But it's not, it's not unusual for the village attorney to charge a much higher rate when it's a developer, developer's dime, or when he's in court. But the standard, like, meeting fees, I'm sure is discounted appropriately.
Yes, it is. It's relatively low.
Some time back, we had the adjudication discussion, and we moved to the local adjudication. Is there any numbers showing what we used to collect versus what it's costing us now?
The fines are up slightly, not a huge increase.
So is it weighing out? Are we losing money versus what we used to do, or are we?
No, we are, we are gaining money just from the lower housing court fees. The administrative hearing is $4,500 a year for legal fees, so that is very low compared to.
What we used to pay.
Housing court.
Okay, good to know.
You're not sending the personnel to Rolling Meadows to, for half a day to testify for maybe three and a half minutes.
Get zero.
Send them down to Mollman. Our collection is a little more of your speaking side.
All those things are positives of the adjudication system. Any other questions on professional services?
Nope.
Then we will do the big switch and flip in the police department.
So while we have a move here, we're thinking police and then what?
Police and hopefully, well, two, three.
You pages around the table, you might want to introduce two.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to be here to present our budget tonight. I've got Jeff Prakelis and Sergeant Scott Yarwood joining me. We'll start off with our budget highlights. So our budget for this year has increased by about 4%, primarily attributed to increased personnel costs and the central services contributions that Chris Hostetler spoke about earlier. So this budget includes a request to expand our staffing level by filling one civilian investigations secretary position and one civilian records clerk position. So these are both existing positions that we've held open over the years, and we're now requesting to fill. They're not requests for new positions, which is why they aren't included in the Personnel Request Detail Budget Sheet. I can talk a little bit about each of those in detail. So in 2015, our last investigations secretary retired. At the time, she was working out of the data entry room in records, not in investigations because we didn't have any room for her back there. And when she retired, we figured with the new police department coming, it would just make sense to wait to hire someone after the police department was built, instead of putting somebody back in that tiny office away from the staff that they would be responsible for working with. So our case tracking, the investigation secretary would cover our case tracking. Our cases since May 1st through October 31st of 2018 are up 38.9% from the same time last year. So we're seeing a lot more cases being assigned to investigations. That person would take care of all our phone calls and the screening of the phone calls, the routing of the phone calls, which will help improve customer service and efficiency. They would initiate and maintain contact with complainants and victims and provide them with regular status updates on cases. They would review our records management system, intelligence bulletins, patrol notices, and area-wide intelligence reports to provide investigations with up-to-date information. They'd make requests from other agencies for copies of reports, assist with employee backgrounds for new employees. They'd run leads information for all investigations. They would cover my one secretary, or administrative secretary during her absences, assist with completing FOIA requests, and other paperwork and things like that. As far as the records clerk goes, we do staff studies for records every three years. So I took a look back going to 2009. In 2009, we had nine full-time and three part-time clerks. In 2011, that was reduced from nine full-time to eight full-time through attrition, and three part-time to two part-time. And partly, that was due to anticipation of a more effective and efficient process due to the implementation of a new records management system that we were implementing. When we looked at that in 2015, the staffing assessment recommended actually increasing the number of full-time clerks from eight to nine to handle the workload, and anticipated increased workload due to the implementation of local adjudication. In 2017, the staffing was then reduced again from eight to seven. We never got that increase that was recommended in 2015. And then with the budget tightness of 2017, we were asked to keep a position open when a clerk retired, so that reduced us from eight to seven. In the 2018 staffing assessment, it showed over the last three years, activity in records increased by 9%. With the addition of parking tickets in 2018 to local adjudication hearings, we now have to supply three records clerks for each local adjudication hearing. One to be the computer clerk, one to be the file clerk, and one to be the case organizer and disposition clerk. When we added the parking tickets to local adjudication hearings, that adds an average of 80 more cases to each hearing, and that process involves creating court jackets and mailing out four letters per case. Also this year, a new law went into effect that requires automatic expungement of all juvenile records between 2013 and current, and it needs to be completed by 2021. Currently, we have 754 of these records to expunge. In addition, FOIA requests continue to increase. In the last year, 62% of all the FOIAs received by the village were police requests. That was about 1,450 FOIA requests. And looking at those activities I referred to that have increased over the last three years by 9%, here's a breakdown since 2012. In 2012, we had 36,962 records-related activities. That increased by about 3,000 to 39,000 in 2013. Then it was reduced a little bit to 20, in 2014, to 37,000. But then in 2015, with the addition of local adjudication, it went from 36,894 in 2014 to 52,559 in 2015, and then increased again to 55,000 in 2016 and 57,000 in 2017. So they're doing a lot more, almost double as far as activities with two less people than we had in 2009. They've been doing it all without complaint. The problem is if a clerk goes out on FMLA or whatever due to birth of a child, which has happened, we don't have anybody to fill those positions. And we're open 24 hours a day, seven days a week, and the staffing that we have in there is bare minimum right now, and we need at least one additional person to help appropriately staff that and fill some of those increased activities that they're dealing with. So those are our two requests to fill those open positions. You'll see in our budget requests for a couple interfaces that we need to implement due to DuPage County and DuCom implementing a new CAD system. So those CAD systems, or the new CAD system will now interface with our records management system. The budget also includes a request to purchase a drone, I'll call it. It's referred to as a small unmanned aircraft system, and we want to utilize this to assist with locating missing persons, taking aerial photos of crime and traffic crash scenes, or utilize pursuant to a search warrant. If you remember, late last fall, we had a missing child who was missing for several hours in a swamp. This would have been a perfect area to use that piece of equipment in. We could fly it over the area without having to send people in. It comes with an option for an infrared lens, so we could use it in low-light conditions if we wanted to, and that would have really helped us a lot during that search. Moving on to the next page, as far as our short-term goals.
Chief, let me stop you there. $19,000 seems like a lot to me. Isn't there a cheaper model?
Actually, that is cheaper. I know that some other communities have been looking at them, and they've been budgeting double for that. What I'm, what I'm proposing is actually to use our equitable sharing funds for that. That would be a good use. Equitable sharing funds are really a good use to fund equipment with, so it's not coming out of the village's budget, it's coming out of money that we seized, and I think that would be appropriate use for that.
Okay.
Chief, don't we have some sharing capabilities with fire departments and things like that? Do we not, or do we know whether or not a fire department has this drone? And then the other concern I have is just simply the upkeep that's going to come with it, with the FAA, and staying certified with the ongoing cost of providing the certificates from the FAA.
So there is some of that. I have Detective Sergeant Scott Yarwood here tonight. Before we even wanted to request this, we took a look at what that would look like, what you're talking about is getting, as far as getting certified and how hard that would be.
Right.
So I sent two people to a training class, one of them being Sergeant Yarwood, the other being Sergeant Pete Rakowitz. They have both been certified by the FBI, or FAA, as pilots and have passed the test, so they actually have licenses to fly it. And what we would seek to do is get more people trained on that. Now to your question as far as borrowing them from other agencies, I know our fire district.
Sharing, you know.
Sharing. We could. One of the things with using equitable sharing funds is it has to be used by the police department. So if they request us in some type of mutual aid fashion, we could respond and assist them with some type of investigation. What we wouldn't be able to do is go out and inspect water towers or do thing, or let the village use it for their use if we're using equitable sharing funds to purchase this piece of equipment.
Is it beneficial for Public Works to use a piece of equipment like this?
So it could be. What I've talked about with Paula is actually using this as a, as a test to see how easy it is, what the certifications are, how hard it would be to get people in there, and we found it's not that hard. The test is difficult, you have to pay attention to the curriculum and pass the test. But I think the more we get used to it and see how we can use it, we might have some better ideas for the village, and then the village may be able to buy one of Public Works and use it for different things.
This discussion about drones reminds me of our discussions that we had about GIS. It was a significant investment. We weren't really quite sure how we were going to use it, how the applications were going to work. And what we found is now, once we got comfortable, once we made the investment, once we started looking at the ways that we could use it, we found 101 other ways that we could use it that we didn't anticipate. And so I didn't want to go full speed with the drone. There's a part of me that says, oh, come on, that's, that's the newest novelty thing, right? You know, every, you know, my nephew's an engineering major, he and his friends built three of them, right? And every kid's got one or whatever. So that was the attitude that I brought into that discussion, not a very positive one. The chief convinced me that there is significant value from a police department standpoint, and I think that's where I would feel most comfortable making that investment in this equipment. Once we see how it works, how the training goes, are we keeping up with it? Is it, is it more expensive to maintain than it's worth? Those are the kinds of questions that I would like to see before we start talking about expanding it into other uses.
What I can do is I can turn it over to Sergeant Garwood. He went through and actually got the quote for the piece of equipment, as well as the classes, and he can speak a little bit about what the costs involved are.
By no means am I an expert, but I am being challenged to become an expert in the drone use, and I'm quickly educating myself. I think I can answer the questions you guys, ladies and gentlemen, have. The cost seems exorbitantly high because you aren't just buying a drone. When you go to the Costco and you spend a couple thousand dollars for this particular model, you aren't getting the thermal imaging camera, you aren't getting the forward-looking infrared camera, you are not getting the GPS technology, you're not getting the three-camera heads we potentially will have on this model. We have to get at least 14 batteries. You won't get 14 batteries for that price. We have to keep the bird in the air for a significant amount of time. The battery life is anywhere from 20 to 34 minutes, depending on the payload it's carrying, the wind, how far, how aggressive we're flying. So we have to bring it down, put another battery in, put it back up, charge that battery, and the rotation cycle is about 14 batteries to keep the bird in the air. So that's realistically where those costs seem highly objectional compared to what you could buy as a civilian. Fees and regulations and memberships, there are none as of now. To be quite honest with you, the FAA is a very liberal guide or controller of the drones. It's the state that has the more restrictive requirements. Illinois has a Freedom of Surveillance Act, freedom from surveillance of drones specifically. They tell us what we can use a drone for. The FAA says what we can't use a drone for. The FAA simply says we can't go more than 100 miles per hour, we can't fly more than 400 feet unless we're going over some type of structure. We have to be within 400 feet of the ground or 400 feet to the top of a structure. The FAA says we must fly during daylight unless we get a special waiver that we would seek through the FAA, and that should not be a problem. The FAA says we can not fly at night without lights and a waiver. Now, the State of Illinois Freedom of Surveillance from Drone Act says what we can use the drone for, and it's very specific currently. Like Chief said, it's for investigations when we have a search warrant that's authorized by a court. We can use it for emergencies, natural disasters, tornadoes like we just saw in Alabama, a quick flyover to find victims, people that need help. It's a safety concern. We can put a drone up, and realistically, drones are literally a workforce multiplier and a work-hour reducer. We can do what one body can do in a matter of minutes. We can do what 17 bodies can do in an hour, in a matter of minutes with a drone, and the safety. It gets us to the people that need the help quicker, and it prevents exposure for officers and staff in a risky risk. In the last five years, I can probably think of literally four or five high-profile sites that a drone would have been helpful for the Village of Bartlett. Back to what the State of Illinois allows us to use it for is missing persons and endangered people, traffic crash investigations and crime scene investigations, and nationally-recognized terrorism threats. So that's what we're empowered and allowed to in the State of Illinois, and the Village of Bartlett obviously is going to follow those guidelines. I do see the State of Illinois kind of relaxing a little bit as the technology advances and the comfort level becomes more acceptable for people like you in your position and us as police officers. It is literally where law enforcement needs to go, and I know Bartlett is traditionally ahead of the game, and we'd like to stay ahead of the game. And as I was sitting here earlier today, I just realized another thing I could add to this list. We could better advertise and get another number-one national night out if we had a drone to record some of the events and get a better bang-for-a-buck with the drones. Thank you.
What other municipalities in the area have a drone?
Hanover Park has one, and I do have a survey of quite a, several agencies, but locally, Hanover Park has one. Elgin is kind of leading the pack right now. They have quite a significant drone program, and they're actually putting on trainings and they're inviting any other agencies that are interested in coming in there. And we'd like to get up to Elgin standards and surpass them in the very near future if it's so appropriate.
We talked about earlier tonight that we spend approximately $49,000 in police fees, not fees, but we invest that much for community events. Do you see that this piece of equipment could reduce those costs specifically for things like the Fourth of July? Is there an application there, or it's not conducive to that?
I don't think so. I mean, we have to be able to be, when there's so many people there, we have to be there to respond. That would just provide video. And like Sergeant Garwood said, at this point, we're prohibited from flying it over crowds. So what we would have to do is take it up and then bring it straight back down. We can't fly out to different areas over crowds.
I would find it helpful if maybe you had some more information you could send our way, like if there's even a YouTube video that kind of outlines its various capabilities that would probably make me a little bit more comfortable with it.
We could, and I have a draft policy for how we would use it and some of the stipulations. And, you know, we can only keep the video for 30 days unless it's evidence, and then it has to be deleted, so I can definitely get that out to you.
Chief, as you know, there's several types of drones that you can, that are available, right? Is this a six-prop, a four-prop, you know, is this, you know, vertical liftoff or then can fly outward? Do you know what I'm saying? There's a variety of different drones. People don't know that, but there's a variety of different drones, and I'm just curious. For 19 grand, you can buy an ultralight for 19 grand, put a person up there flying around people, taking pictures.
The specific model that we are requesting is kind of becoming the industry standard. It's called a Matrice 210. Those specifics, you could literally, as we just said, we would get you some more YouTube video, we could get the specifics, we could get you the specifications. I believe it is a four-prop aircraft, and it has literally upward sensing, lower sensing, collision avoidance in all directions, up and down, so it allows to fly underneath something and over something. It won't crash itself, but the actual specifications, I, like I said, I'm getting myself educated and becoming the expert on it, and I can get you those answers. I do know that this is the one that is recommended in the communities that are using it because of the capabilities it has.
Sure.
I would be interested to know how Public Works could possibly use a drone and maybe split it over the police department and Public Works. That would be my thought.
I'm sure it could assist with watering hanging baskets.
I was really leaning toward a public-private venture with Amazon. We could maybe shore up some of those costs.
Delivering packages?
Delivering packages, yeah.
I would just hate to see it only be used a handful of times at the police department and then only be used for training, and that's it.
But I think, I think trustee Carbonara may have seen the point when it comes to safety, and I hate trailing any other communities around here when it comes to that. If it could find a lost child or locate, you know, anything like that and save hours and hours of search time, I'm all for something like that. And I think we're kind of beating around on a very small budget item here.
So, along those lines, Mayor, in a critical incident, take something like Aurora, where we've had barricaded people in houses here, you could put that up, and you can monitor if somebody comes out of a certain part of that warehouse or whatever. You're going to see it right away, so it can help prevent escape, it can help prevent, direct you to position your officers around a perimeter and things like that, so.
I guess I understand the value and the need, and if we just hadn't built a $20 million police building, then I think little incidental expenses wouldn't be an issue, but I think we've got to be pretty careful about even 4% raises in the police budget, just personally.
I understand, and like I said, this is, this would be, I'm proposing this to come out of equitable sharing, which is money that we seize, so it's not coming out of the village budget, it has to be used for equipment.
But we can get all that information to you so that you can further evaluate this before we move forward.
Can't hear you, Vance.
Based on what Sergeant Garwood had mentioned, 19,000 is the base package. We wouldn't get the 14 bed, a reason we're going to need to keep this up for six or seven hours looking for somebody. So can we get an idea what that's going to be, or is that?
That's the all-in expense.
That includes the batteries. Thank you.
I'd like to add something else. There are no guarantees in life and in the job we do. We do the best we can, but I'd be willing to say if we had this piece of equipment when the particular case chief was talking about with the missing child that was in a swamp, we, if we had this equipment, we would have found him within 15 minutes of putting this aircraft in the air as opposed to the hours it took to find him. We knew where his last known location was, and we just couldn't get to it, and we were bringing every resource we possibly could to find that child, and as close to a guarantee as I can personally give you, that child would have been found with this technology, the infrared and the heat thermal imaging, within a matter of minutes of that aircraft being in the air.
We're always looking for new activities. We could always do drone races.
Or maybe we could use the drones to deliver the water bills.
All right, we digress. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to our short-term goals. I'll just hit some of the highlights here. To date, we've applied for 151,945 grant funds for fiscal year 1920. We're going to seek to continue our mobile outreach program in neighborhoods throughout the village throughout the summer. We're going to continue offering our Citizen Police Academy classes, and we have a Teen Police Academy class scheduled to start here pretty soon. As far as our complex goals, we're going to continue promoting village standards for service delivery, and one of the big things I think that's really helped us do that is the frontline software program. One of the things I like about it is it helps our supervisors direct our staff to be in the areas where we're getting complaints, and then when the officers go out there, they pull it up on their computer in their car, and they enter whatever activity that they did when they were out there immediately when it concludes. And what that allows me to do is respond to our residents as to exactly what steps we've taken to address their complaints, how many times we've been out there, how many citations we've issued, if we'd issued any. And I think that the residents really appreciate that because they see for sure, they may not see us out there all the time, but they can get the data that we were out there and the enforcement measures that we took to address their complaint. This summer coming up, we have, our Kalia assessors will be here for reaccreditation July 22nd through 25th. We expect to successfully receive our reaccreditation, and if so, we'll receive that in November 2019 at the Kalia Conference in Covington, Kentucky, and this would be our seventh Kalia reaccreditation award. As far as our long-term goals go, we've seen some retirements in our staff in upcoming. We've got a couple of command staff that are going to be retiring here shortly. Part of what I'm seeking to do is continue to seek out specialized leadership training programs to continue to train our command staff. So this budget includes training for Northwestern School of Police Staff in Command, the Police Executive Research Forum Senior Management Institute for Police, and as well as the National, or FBI National Academy. Additionally, this year, Chicago is hosting the International Chiefs of Police Conference, which is convenient for us because I can send my staff down there, we can commute back and forth, so there's no hotel stays or anything like that. So I'd like to get some of my command staff to that as well. Moving on to the next page, our budget also requests to add additional equipment to help officers address residents' traffic complaints, including a new radar trailer message board, some LiDAR units, the last of our flashing school speed zone signs, I think that will be at Hawk Hollow Elementary, that should be our last school, and then additional traffic counters and LED traffic flares. As far as our 2018-19 highlights go, police staff moved into the first phase of the new police department on May 24th, 2018, and into the entire building on January 2nd, 2019. As you just heard, we received first place for 2018 National Night Out, which we're very proud of. And just so you know, that is a very intensive job, National Night Out. It's a year-long thing. The day after it starts, or the day after they submit our award package, they're already starting the next year's planning, and the goal is always to make it bigger and better. And last year, they made it bigger and better by adding the Touch a Truck and the Child Safety Seat, and that was well-received by the community. So I'm looking forward to seeing what they do this year. We also received the 2017 Railroad Safety Specialty Award as part of the Illinois Traffic Safety Challenge. Jeff Prokakis was selected by the FBI to attend the FBI National Academy in the spring of 2019, so he'll be heading out there in a couple weeks for a 10-week program. We continue to train our people in the concepts of crisis intervention and get them certified as CIT, and to date, 81% of our sworn personnel have been trained in crisis intervention. And this is extremely important because we continue to see an increase in mental health-related calls throughout the community. We also expect to receive approximately $156,186 in grant allocations for fiscal year 2018-19. Okay, moving on here, as far as our police summary goes, you'll see the increase or the requested increase in staffing by adding a secretary filling that vacant position and adding an additional records clerk. Those are the two additional positions that bring us from 72 to 74 full-time employees. And then we are expecting increases in most of the activity measures that are shown below. As I mentioned, FOIA requests, we, every year, it seems like we're seeing an increase in FOIA requests, which takes a lot of time to process. Because of the sensitive nature of some of the reports, there's a lot of redaction that needs to be done, and then that all needs to be sent out. Okay, on to our capital outlay. So last year, you tasked us with taking a look at this vehicle replacement guideline evaluation form that we came up with. So we've got about 40 vehicles in our fleet, and as we took a look at the scheduled replacement, out of all of those vehicles, we felt one this year was met the criteria for replacement. So we're requesting to replace one patrol vehicle this year. We expect it to have approximately 106,000 miles at the time of replacement. It's got, or it's projected to have 6,682 idling hours, which adds another 200,000 miles to that vehicle. It's also had some maintenance done to it to the tune of about $8,000 on repairs. One of the things that I did, I mentioned the Aurora incident earlier. One of the things I did after that incident happened and those officers went in right away and got shot, which is what we train our officers to do, is go in right away, is take a look at the equipment we have. Last year, we were fortunate enough to add a couple of rifle-rated ballistic shields, and years ago, I don't know, probably 10 years ago, we got a donation of ballistic helmets from military surplus. The issue with that is I don't know that they're compliant with the NIGA standards for ballistic helmets, and not everybody has a helmet. So what I'd like to do is add 56 helmets, one for each officer to keep in their car when they're out on patrol, so that when a critical incident happens, they're prepared to go in. That would be about $240 a helmet, and the total cost would be $13,440, which I would also propose using equitable sharing funds for. I apologize for that not being in the budget. The budget was submitted before that incident happened. The next item, item two, is, and item three are the interfaces we were talking about with the CAD system. We have these in a current-year budget as well, and if, I think one is in the process of being built now, the other one is, should be built soon. If we're able to get them paid for out of the current-year budget, we will remove them for out of the current-year budget, we will remove them from the 2019-20 budget. Item number five is, we are seeking to replace seven tasers. They need to be replaced, because the current model tasers are being phased out, and no replacement parts and cartridges will be available any longer. Item six is AEDs. We've got three AEDs that we're seeking to replace. Every patrol officer takes an AED out each day on their shifts, and the current models are discontinued, and replacement parts are no longer available. I think last year, I was asked, you know, how many times have we used these? So I took a look at that. 2015, we had one saved with an AED, and then 2016, 2017, 2018, we had two saves each of those years with an AED. So that's pretty good, total, we saved a total of seven lives over the last four years, and I think $5,400 is well worth, was well worth it. Item number seven is a speed trailer. This is a replacement, it would seek to replace a 2013 speed trailer due to condition and age. We've spent about $1,000 on maintenance, and it's in poor overall condition. This new message, or this new speed trailer also can be used as a message board, which would be able to be utilized during special events, serious crash scenes, or truck enforcement details, and critical incidents. Our, our speed trailers are probably the single most requested piece of equipment that we get from our residents, and unless there's inclement weather, these are out every day of the year. I'm also seeking to use equitable sharing funds to purchase that. Number eight is a live-scan system for our interview room. We have a live-scan system that's the current way of taking fingerprints right now, and we have one of them, it's in our jail area. This new one would serve as a backup to that, but one of the things we deal with is when residents or business owners come in to be fingerprinted for licenses, if we have somebody in our lockup, we can't take them back there and fingerprint them, so they go through the process of scheduling appointment, coming in, and then we wind up arresting someone, and then we can't take them back there, and then they have to come back again. So from a customer service standpoint, as well as having another machine available in case ours goes down, this would be a good use for that, and I would seek to use equitable sharing funds to pay for that piece of equipment as well. Number nine is a microfiche and microfilm machine. The village has one of these, and I've been told that it's shared by all the departments, and sometimes it, it's tied up, because other people are using it. So we'd like to purchase one for the police department, we have to store all of our documents for a long period, so I would be seeking to use equitable sharing funds to purchase that as well. Item 10 is police training suits. We have two of these currently that are about 15 years old, and utilized during ongoing scenario-based training. They're pretty beat up, and we're seeking to replace two of those at $1,250 apiece. Item 11 is LiDAR units. Each of those, two LiDAR units, are 11 years old, so we're seeking to replace them with two new units. They are used for traffic speed enforcement activities. One thing I'll mention is, as part of our traffic grants that we seek, is there's an ability to get a LiDAR unit through the traffic grant, so if we are able to get that LiDAR unit through the traffic grant, we will reduce this from two to one for this request. Number 12 is LED traffic safety flares. We're being asked to do more and more traffic control at community events, and this would help keep our people safe who are out there in the road directing traffic. That's one of the most dangerous things we do, especially at night, is have our officers stand out in the middle of the road directing traffic, so we're seeking to purchase seven sets of those flares for $4,410 total. Number 13, I referred to earlier, these are two solar flashing school zone signs. I don't know, it's been five or six years that we've been slowly implementing these at elementary schools throughout town, and the last school that we have to do this at is Hawk Hollow Elementary School, so we're seeking to purchase two of those at $3,500 apiece. Item 14, if we are allowed to fill our investigation secretary position, we will need a computer to put at that workstation, so that's what that is for. Item 15, we've talked about, as far as the small and manned aircraft system or drone, we will get you the information that you requested about that. Item 16 is some storage drawers for our two supervisor vehicles, this would help them be able to organize their equipment, keep it secured and stored properly, instead of just being strewn about the back of the SUV. And the last thing is a pole-mounted traffic stat data collector, so I'm sure you're aware, over the years, we have traffic counters that we've used for traffic studies, those have to be nailed to the asphalt, which poses a problem, especially in the winter, because we can't get them in the ground, or the plows will tear them up. What we did is, we borrowed one of these, and we used it for our latest traffic study on North Avenue. It's pretty discreet, it's mounted to a pole, nobody really knows what it is, and what we found is it gave us much more accurate data than what we were getting from the ones on the road. So originally, there were, there was a request to replace two of our current traffic counters, and I took that out, and I put two of these in, because I think we can get better results with these pole-mounted traffic data collectors. So that's it for our capital request. Moving on to professional development, I'll just highlight some of the requests in here. As I stated before, we've got our Kalia conference coming up, November 13th through 16th. I have our deputy chief and our Kalia accreditation manager slated to go to the full conference, and then I have myself, the village administrator, and the mayor down to hopefully get the award from November 15th to 16th down there, Covington, Kentucky. On the next page, we've got the 126th Annual International Association of Chiefs of Police Conference. Like I said, we're not budgeting any money to stay down there, we'll commute back and forth, so basically, all we're paying for is the registration fees for my command staff to be able to attend that. Moving down toward the bottom of the page, there's the INIA Drug, Terrorist, and Criminal Interdiction Conference. This is for our officer who is assigned to the DEA, it is in Miami, Florida, but she has to attend that as part of her duties. Beneath that is our Northwestern University Center for Public Safety Staff and Command, we're seeking to send one sergeant to that in the fall. And then on the following page, you'll see the FBI National Academy that I spoke about earlier, and then I've got two command staff members that I'm seeking to send to the Senior Management Institute for Police, through the Police Executive Research Forum. I'm seeking to use equitable sharing funds to send those two staff members out to that training. To date, over the years, Chief Williams had attended that, Deputy Chief Leonis had attended that, I've attended it, Chuck Snyder has attended it, and two of those three people are now retired, Chuck's soon to be retiring, he announced his retirement effective in April, so I'm looking to get some more command staff to that professional training for command staff. That's really it for the highlights of our professional development. Moving on to professional association, I'll just kinda hit on the major things. Weren't too many increases this year, one of the major increases that you will see is on page, my page numbers are different than yours, but it's for the DuPage Chiefs of Police Association, Major Crimes Task Force. So, we're part of the Major Crimes Task Force right now, what DuPage Chiefs is looking to do is similar to what Cook County has done with the Major Case Assistance Team, in that they're combining Major Crimes Task Force, Officer Involvement Death Investigations, Canine Assistance Team, and DuPage County Crash Investigation Team, all in one, and for this $4,000 fee, we have access to all of that. I will say, we have used Cook County and DuPage County, and DuPage County doesn't really take kindly to that, because they wanna use their own team, they have state's attorneys assigned to that team, it makes sense to use the team and the county that you're in, so I think this would be a great addition for us to be able to use this task force for all of those things. And then, really, that's, everything else pretty much remained the same from the prior years. If there's no questions about that, we can keep moving. As far as our line items, you'll see that our regular salaries have increased, and part of that is due to the new records clerk and investigation secretary, and filling those open positions. Employee retirement contributions have gone up, we've seen some decreases, some of the systems we had in the old police department were eliminated, so we no longer have to pay for those. We've got, we're in our last year of payments for our records management system, so this year is actually a half a year payment, and then the IGIS fees that were associated with that were eliminated as well, that's why there's a 10% decrease in commuter, in computer services. Our advertising's a little bit down, so we see a 33% decrease. Vehicle setup is 71% decrease, because we're only requesting to purchase one vehicle this year, so only one vehicle to set up. There is an increase of about 12% in uniforms, and that's because of the expected promotions and anticipated new employees that we're gonna have to hire. Planning and research is up about 8%, that's because of our Kalia reaccreditation taking place this summer. We've got about a 9% increase with the Police and Fire Commission, because we are going through about 10 police applicants in order to hire one. So we're going through our list pretty quickly, we anticipate potentially having to run another test this year. Our machinery and equipment request is down about 40%, because we're requesting to purchase more equipment with equitable sharing funds this year. And then you see the 20% increase in central services, which Chris talked about a little earlier. Any questions on that? All right, as far as our, unless you want me to get into the line item justification, that's about all I have.
I think the top of mind for me when it comes to police budgets these days is the, what you can do to ward off what we see in the news all the time, right? I think that's highest and best use of training, things like that. What kind of ways are we, are we experimenting new ways to make sure that we're not vulnerable in general areas of our community to things that have been happening? Like the, do we have any jurisdiction over, like, expired Foid cards or anything like that?
We do, and actually, we are looking at that right now, and in the process of reviewing all those, making sure we've contacted everybody, that if we have contacted them, that they've turned in their Foid card, or surrendered their Foid card to us. So that's something that we're actively doing, I think every police department is going through and doing that right now, so just because criminal, the thing about it is criminals are gonna create, or do this type of thing if they have a Foid card or not, but what we wanna do is, if we're getting notification from the state saying somebody's concealed carry license is revoked, or their Foid card is revoked, that we're reaching out to them, that we're contacting them, that we're telling them that they need to turn it in to us, and that we're documenting it, so that we can show the steps that we've taken to make sure that we're following through when we get that notice from the state.
I just think that more proactive things out in the community, awareness, active shooter training in different high-profile areas, things like that.
So, one of the things that we are doing is, we're in the very early stages of planning a business academy for business owners, and part of that can be active shooter training, it can be, we talked about, you know, procedures for terminating an employee, and what are some of the best practices for that, and other things like that, so we're doing an active shooter training actually for village staff coming up here, I think it's next week. We've tested all of our panic buttons here at the village, and we're gonna be testing them at Public Works pretty soon, and we're willing to do that for any other business, or the Chamber, or anybody, if they want us to put on a training, we're always willing to do that for them.
Yeah, I think you'd get a lot of traction with Chamber and other, even the religious organizations in town, to go into those environments now, just because it's so front of mind.
So at our Religious Leaders Breakfast last year, that was one of the things that came up, and we'd been in contact with them about setting up a training, and I think Lake County had just done one at the time, so we wound up presenting that information to a couple of the organizations who inquired about it, and we were willing to put on a training for them, but they decided that they were gonna take it themselves and then seek out their own training that was more specific to religious institutions. One of the other things we do is, we are present at all of the school emergency lockdown drills, we work with the schools, we document that we were there, if we see any deficiencies in their, how they handle it, we're supposed to report that as far as their policies and things like that. So we're very active, and we encourage all of our officers to do walkthroughs at schools and businesses, just as a presence, to have a presence out there, get to know the layouts of the buildings, and that people get to know our officers.
Excellent.
Get us that information on the drone though, please.
Thank you for being so prepared with the drone information. Do we get a chance to fly it, Noffey? I mean us.
See, I'm thinking about buying one myself, but it's only gonna be about 1,500 bucks, that's the difference.
We're trying to shoot it in the range. You wanna fly the drone?
Buy on you.
Is everybody ready for the next session, or do we need a short break? Should we move it to the next one?
Let's move it.
It's our stretch goal, so.
What's that?
Yeah, it's a stretch goal. Let's be done. If you'd like to push it to next time, you certainly can.
I think so. I think. Yeah, but it's.
What do you wanna do, Mayor?
It might be a longer conversation with all the, there's some of the changes and stuff.
What do you wanna do, Mayor?
How many more of these do we have?
We have one.
I should know that, I went through the.
Thank you. We've got CD, PW, which is a big one, Building and Finance, scheduled for our next meeting, so you can add golf to that.
How large is golf?
Well, we have the golf program itself, grounds, and F and B.
We have everybody here from the golf course, we have, you know, four people.
We'll have them next time, too.
Can you guys keep it to 25 words or less? So could I. It looks good to me, let's move on.
We never kept anything at 25 words or less, for crying out loud, ever.
The fact that we're having this conversation underscores the need to perhaps continue the golf until the next village board.
Are we anticipating doing the same thing, where we'd have a 30-minute preemptive discussion on our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. If you, if that's. I think this worked out well, but I don't wanna, like, have everybody got here glossy-eyed, so I think if we've got, I think we've got plenty of time on the next meeting to shift golf into that one.
Will do.
Unless somebody's adamant about going through it tonight. We've been here for three hours, so.
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All right, so entertain a motion to adjourn, which I don't have to do anymore.
I see.
Motion made by trustee Ranky, seconded by trustee Danie, please call the roll.
Justy Cameron.
Yes.
Carbonaro.
Yes.
Danie.
Yes.
Brenney.
Yes.
Hopkins.
Yes.
Ranky.
Yes.
We are adjourned.